Okay, let's now, I will now open the Small Cities Committee meeting. It is Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. We are in the City Hall auditorium and it is six twenty P M. Present, we have Councilwoman Hona, Councilman Oliver, and Councilman Waldron. We have item one, eighty-four Pleasant Street, project number one four three, S C one eight zero one two nine. Vote to approve an additional twelve hundred dollars at eighty-four Pleasant Street for the replacement of eight sheets of plywood that were exposed after stripping the roof shingles. The current Small Cities loan is seventeen thousand three hundred and twelve. This will increase to eighteen thousand five hundred and twelve, and the mortgage will be modified to reflect the increase pending City Council approval. Discussion?
No, none. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All right, all right, Councilman Oliver. Moves it, moves it, second by Councilwoman Hona, any, no further discussion?
No, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, item one passes. Item two, project number one four three. P, is that an I or an L? I, eighteen, rehab. Vote to authorize project approval to Leek Builders LLC of Oxford, Connecticut, for twenty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for roofing, lead-based paint remediation, basement window installation, electrical updates, and rebuilding the front porch at forty-two Pittian Avenue pending City Council approval. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Hona, second by Councilman Oliver. Discussion?
Do we want to talk about the, just the fifty-five cent thing being different?
Well.
In the, I know it's, it's correct on the motion. I don't know if we need to.
It's correct on the motion. And it's, and it's correct on the agenda items for the councils. I don't think we, we got the right amount.
Okay.
It's just in the side paperwork, yeah. There was a mistake.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. And this house has at least eighty-four thousand dollars worth of equity.
Yep.
Or more.
Likely more, this market, yeah.
And market price, right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any further discussion?
Mm-mm.
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, passes. Number three, business by members. Vote to consider business by members.
No.
I have them.
None, okay, so I'm not, don't need a motion. Okay, four, adjourn, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilman Oliver, second by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we are adjourned.
Pleasure doing business with you both.
Six thirty, and we have a quorum. So I'd like to call this regular meeting of the City Council on W P C A to order. For the record, today is Monday, October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, council members participating in person are Councilman Waldron, Councilwoman Hona, Councilman Minichia, Councilman Kevin Arrow, and Councilwoman Oliver. And participating via Zoom, we have Councilwoman Riwett. Before we begin the meeting, could we kindly stand and pledge the flag?
President Johnson, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of Georgia, one nation under the Constitution.
All right. Before we jump into the agenda, uh, I would ask the council and the members of the public in attendance this evening to give us a moment of silence in memory of Corporation Council Victor Michelle, uh, who passed away last week. Thank you very much. We'll jump into item number one. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four subsection E of the City Council and W P C A meeting rules of procedure.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Minichia. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're open to the public. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address the council at this time?
Yes, there is. Steve Ivey in Torrenton. Thanks for having me. Uh, my sympathies again for Vic Michelle. I really appreciated everything he provided for the city. Uh, the only agenda item I want to speak to tonight is the Walden Project. Uh, the forty-year lease was of concern at the last meeting. Um, I'm hoping we could come back to the table and look at maybe delivering on some milestones. Uh, now, providing a whole forty-year period without actually building something uh, on that site would be egregiously long time uh, to hold and block any other development on that site. So I would hope we would have some kind of plan on the table, have one milestone, and have a series of other milestones so that we are actually collecting taxes on that property. So I, I hope we could have a, a further discussion on this at City Council tonight and hear some different perspectives on this. Thank you for your time.
Still open to the public, if there's anyone else from the public wishing to address the council? Hearing none, moving to item two. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from October second, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Item three, I'll entertain a motion uh, per City Charter, section C six dash one, uh, to retain attorney Kevin Nelligan uh, to serve in the role of interim Corporation Counsel uh, until such time as we can, um, by charter, uh, appoint a permanent Corporation Counsel. Do I have such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilman Minichia. Are there questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, I will entertain a motion to appoint Randall Stelma as an alternate zoning board of appeals member to fill the remainder of a term set to expire in December first, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
All right, I heard Councilman Minichia, second by Councilman Oliver. Uh, questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Jeremy Spitz as a regular member of the Conservation Commission to fill the remainder of a term set to expire September fourth, two thousand twenty-six.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments on this, on this appointment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six. Uh, we'll take this in two parts. Uh, six A, I'll entertain a motion to refer the acquisition of property on Red Mountain Avenue, map block lot number one two zero 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 three zero zero six to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review uh, in, um, recommend, to formulate a recommendation per Connecticut General Statutes, section eight dash two four.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Oliver, second by Councilman Minichia. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, and six B, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to negotiate with the tax collector for the acquisition of the eleven point three acres on Red Mountain Avenue, map block lot one two zero 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 three zero zero six, for the price of twenty-five thousand dollars to be paid from the contingency line item uh, pending Board of Finance approval.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Floor is open for questions. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion by the City Council here and acting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payment from Fund four ninety sanitary sewer capital improvement. Uh, this is the invoice number one five zero five to Yield Industries in the sum of four thousand seven hundred dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona, second by Councilman Minichia. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight. On recommendation of the Small Cities Committee, I'll entertain a motion to approve an additional one thousand two hundred dollars at eighty-four Pleasant Street for the replacement of eight sheets of plywood that were exposed after stripping the roof shingles. The current Small Cities loan is seventeen thousand three hundred and twelve dollars. This will increase the loan to eighteen thousand five hundred and twelve dollars, and the mortgage would be modified to reflect the increase.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Um, and is a report or any additional information from Small Cities?
No, this is just a routine, uh, add-on when there's a roofing project. So it's just a small amount. Work's already done, so, uh, the numbers are there. Everything's good.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the Small Cities Committee to authorize project approval to Leek Builders LLC of Oxford, Connecticut, for twenty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents for roofing, lead-based paint remediation, basement window installation, electrical upgrades, and rebuild the front porch at forty-two Pittian Avenue.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilman Minichia. Uh, anything additional from Small Cities Committee on this motion?
Oh, yeah, just, this is, this is an easy one to approve. There's the house is assessed at eighty-eight thousand, and that's not market value, so it'll be more than that. And, uh, there's only four thousand dollars in liens, so there's lots of equity. So it's good.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the facilities manager to vote to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to execute an agreement to purchase power from the lowest-priced vendor based on the results of the reverse power auction that is being held on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments?
Questions.
Question.
What is a reverse power auction? Yeah. Yes, Councilman Cabanero, my question was, what is a reverse power auction?
Good evening. My name is Richard Fenaro. I'm with Automated Building Systems out of Glastonbury, Connecticut. Uh, reverse, reverse auction, probably the way in which you, um, uh, secured your, your electric for the city more three and four and five years ago was you contacted a supplier and they gave you a price. And that was, that was the process. Reverse auction is, it's, it's an auction. You actually, we take the profile of the city, all of the usage, power load requirements and so forth. It goes into, um, um, a formula, and then we actually go out and we, we invite seven suppliers to bid and, and bid on your energy. So it basically, it'll, it'll satisfy all the requirements for your, your bid requirements you, you have for the city. Um, and it's actually more aggressive. Um, the pricing's more aggressive. We also invite the incumbent, which is Constellation Energy. Um, so you, you always want to, we always want to invite the incumbent um, because they don't want to lose your business, and they're going to be a lot more aggressive. Um, and the auction will be for three or, uh, four hours, and everything, they, they, they all have the same profile, um, all the, the usage requirements and components that make up the, your, your profile for the city. And they will actually aggressively bid each other, against each other. They will actually see what each other is bidding, and you will be able to see live, uh, the day of the auction, um, what each, each supplier is bidding. So actually, at the end of the, um, the auction, there'll be a summary of what suppliers bid on, on, uh, on your usage, and obviously, the lowest bid would be something you would, you would contract to.
Everything else being equal beside, aside from the price?
Uh, every, every, what we set up, when I mean profile, we set up, um, it, we, it's a fixed, uh, fixed rate. Um, we want to make sure that, um, the, the billing is single billed on the utility bill. Uh, so everybody's bidding apples to apples.
Okay. Okay. Other things that typically, I, I'm not sure if they're typical. Besides, I mean, when, you know, when you purchase a service from anybody, there's other things besides the price that factor in.
Mm-hmm.
All those things are, you know, whatever maintenance would be involved, or whatever liabilities would be, all those things are, those are relevant to the city of Torrenton.
Right, you're, you're only, what you're doing is you're only securing the supply side of your electric.
Okay.
You're not touching, the, the ever source is going to be your partner. They'll be delivering, they take care of the meters and the infrastructure. All you're doing is you're, you're, you're contracting for the supply portion of your electric bill.
Okay, fair enough. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, how, um, how many, uh, municipalities currently do it now? Do this now?
I think, well, I don't know exactly how many do it, but most municipalities are doing, going through the, the auction function because it does satisfy that, those bidding requirements each, each town or city has within, within their charter. So, and, and it's, and it doesn't, you know, I remember the days where you used to have to put the pricing in the envelope, the ceiling envelope, and then, you know, at the end of the day, you'd, you know, you'd have to open the envelope. But that is, 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 once, it's archaic, but also, energy, the, it's a, it's a commodity, and it closes every day at five o'clock. So, you know, you can get pricing, you know, the, the old way, and you open up the envelopes even the next day, and, and the pricing really is, is really, is void. It's really not there anymore. So I think most municipalities and boards of education, even corporate uh, that has, you know, uh, the, the, the high usage will go to the auction process because they, it's, it's basically a one-stop shop. You, we do all the work, we invite all the, the major suppliers, and, and they fight for your business.
And, and how do you get paid?
We get paid a commission through, through the, the utility. I'm not, I'm sorry, through the supplier, not the utility. Utility has nothing to do with it. It's, 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 it's the supplier itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
Now, on, on, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but on this, um, the agenda, it says tomorrow, March seventeenth. That's been pushed back to next Monday, the twenty-third, the auction. Just, I want to make a correction on that, if I could.
Okay. You said it's the twenty-third?
The twenty-third, next Monday.
All right, so, uh, motion was made by Councilman Minichia and seconded by Councilman Waldron. Will you amend your motion to read the twenty-third?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Right, item number eleven. On recommendation of the facilities manager and public works director, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to negotiate and execute a lease agreement with Walden Renewables for battery storage and a small portion of the city landfill property.
So moved.
Councilman Minichia?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Riwett, thank you. Uh, all right, the floor is open for questions.
I have questions.
Sure. Um, and forgive me, I was not here for the meeting on the eighteenth of September, so I did spend quite a bit of time watching and re-watching the presentation to make sure that I understood it. Um, and to, um, the gentleman in our public comments uh, question about the forty-year lease that I'm kind of looking at the, um, lease terms. Jamie, can you explain like what would happen if they decided not to develop on the property?
So during the six-year developmental phase, if they realize we can't put it on, something's not going to work, it just dies, goes away, and then the property is fully open to anybody else. But we can't get to that forty-year part until they do a boatload of work and development to see if the site's fully feasible, and all the hoops they have to jump through where this is not just distribution, it's transmission. It's a whole nother ballgame because they have to deal with way higher up at the utility because it's going on the high-tension lines, not just local for here.
Right.
So that's why there's a lot of development, millions of dollars that they'll be spending, which the utility won't even talk to them until they know, yes, you have approval to start to use the land. So that's like step one to even have them start the development. It's very similar to what we did for the solar. Solar project was on a three-year with the option to extend it twice. Where they're trying to extend it into the fourth year, no solar's been put on the property yet. They're still developing it because it takes quite a bit of work. So this is more to lock in a land lease to say, yeah, you can, property is yours for up to six years to do your development and come back with something. And once they do that, further stuff will be brought. That's, we'll hash out all the exact details of where it's going to go, how it has to go, access and the whole nine.
Um, I did hear a number of people's concerns about fire and, and risk of fire. Did you have any conversations with our own fire department about it?
Yes, extensive conversations. We actually had, um, Walden and their engineering also on a conference call with. So if you want to discuss any of the concerns on it and training and everything. From what we've been able to discover through research and stuff, um, this is an ever-changing technology. So what we're looking at today, when it comes to fire protection, could be much different than it would be six years from now. Um, there have been many, many advances in the safety of these units. So some of the earlier things that you might have heard, et cetera, are no longer a concern throughout the industry, and it continues to evolve in a positive direction. You know, and at this particular point, as Jamie had mentioned, this is just really more of a feasibility study of the site. They haven't even given us plans yet, so we can't really look at how that's going to impact fire and any other safety issues. But, uh, they're a very big company, very reputable, and, um, I think it's worth our while to at least explore the opportunity and see where we go with it. And then at that point, we would look more in-depth for the fire.
Okay, thank you.
Before you step down, do you have more?
I have another question, but not on fire. So if you have something else about.
Well, hmm, all right, yeah, it, it sort of, that would dovetail with one of my concerns. What the, the technologies are changing constantly. The, what, what did I just hear about a six-year development phase to this?
Yeah, that's what we're asking for, is that they can have the property so they have the use of the property for six years, so they can explore, bring, you know, engineering in, civil engineering, all that, to look at the land.
Uh, how does that dov, how does that fit in with the forty-year lease proposal? I'm confused about that relationship.
Once they develop it and it can get past the six-year, that's when they'll look to go further on. Once it'll be developed and say, yeah, we can put X amount of batteries. All this stuff has been kind of approved. They've been involved, we have a whole plan of action, then we come back to council.
Does this contract allow for, at the six-year point, if the city is not happy, chances are nobody sitting here at this desk is going to be here still, maybe, but six years from now, is there, is there a, is there a ripcord that the city of Torrenton can pull to get out clean on this contract?
Yeah, do you, yeah, you want, you good with fire?
Yeah. Fire questions, right? Oh, I, well, I was just saying that it did, well.
Got it to answer.
In any, any technology industry, where the technology is changing constantly, anything that's for, that's built today and priced today and profit, uh, profit profiles are built today, forty years out, to me, is ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. There's no way of knowing what, where we're going to be ten years from now, twenty years from now. So, uh, with the fire recommend, they, I don't, you know, I just don't like, what I heard at the last meeting, again, that forty-year throw, to me, was unacceptable. If there's smaller bites to this that allows the city to get out cleanly at a certain point, where they say, this is just not working for us, then I could support this. Not, again, and at that six-year point is something where, you know, again, if the fire, if the fire comes back to the City Council six years, you say, you know what? We're going to need to do, the way they're going, we're going to need to do this, we're going to need to increase that, we're going to need to do this, and the city says, eh-eh, I want that City Council six years from now to be able to say, sorry, no, you know, we're done. Who can, can anybody validate that? Dan, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was going to say, the, the, the process is the, the six-year option period gives us the opportunity to study the site, to deal with the interconnection.
Right.
And then also obtain city and state permits based on specific designs to get the approvals necessary to build the project.
Right.
So during the six years, the city will have many bites at this project as we provide more detailed engineering drawings. And so if, at that point, you know, the fire chief's going to have to sign off on, on our proposal, and if he doesn't like what he sees, we're going to have to find a way to satisfy him, or we won't get the permits necessary to build and operate the facility for that forty-year life.
So is it fair to say that what you're actually, what you're actually contracting for right now is a six-year development phase contract?
Yes, an option, it's an option period with a lease down the road if we obtain all the necessary city and state approvals.
Could this, I will, I will definitely approve that. You know, I will now approve a forty-year sort of, you know, a six-year developmental contract, to me, is acceptable, and I will, I will support that. If this agenda item could, uh, reflect that, that, then I, then I can support it. Okay?
And as you heard, um, Jamie.
For the development to, uh.
The option phase, it's an option phase, it's one, it's the due diligence phase. It's exactly what we did with the solar array. We are in a three-year due diligence phase, option. Once they establish they're able to do the work, then we enter into the lease phase.
Okay, I'm not seeing that contract in front of me, so I would like it reflected.
Well, that's, the motion is to authorize me to negotiate that.
The, okay. In that language you put in there, whatever you want to, a six-year development study, uh, something along those lines?
Well.
And in the presentation that was provided, that the last time Walden was before the council, that's exactly what they told you they were going to present to us.
But I would like to see that, to know that the City Council voted for, to give you six years to, to, you know, at that point, six years from now, the City Council and mayor at that point can review and feel confident that they can get out, if.
So motion was made by Councilman Minichia, seconded by Councilwoman Riwett. So the motion reads, uh, authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to negotiate and execute a lease agreement. Do you want that language? Do you, uh, it's, you're asking for an amendment of the motion to read a six-year option? And forty-year lease agreement?
No, I don't want the forty, no, I don't want, I want the six-year option. And then at that point, whoever's sitting in your seat six years from now, they are not tied to a forty-year lease. They are simply, at that point, they can look at whatever the data is showing, whatever developments, and they can make a decision. Those people sitting at City Council, men and women, they can make the decision to go forward with a thirty-four-year lease, if my math still works.
I think it's actually a four, it's really forty-six years.
Forty-six years.
Six-year option with a forty-year lease.
Yeah, I, I would like a hard, I would like, again, a, a stop at six years for this agenda item, and then let the next council, the next mayor pick it up from there.
Does that work?
Well, I, I don't think that, even with the, um, the solar array that we're putting at the landfill. So the council approved the mayor to negotiate a lease option agreement. So part of that is, the front end of it is a lease option. So that allows the energy company to do their due diligence, review the site, get through all the potential hurdles to see if the project is viable. And if it is viable, And if it is viable, then they exercise the lease option, which is the second part of the agreement. And that would be the forty year lease of the land because now the project is viable, they will build the project. And then we lease the land for the forty year period. They, they do go hand in hand. Very, it's exactly the same agreement we have with US Solar for the landfill. They had a three year lease option agreement. They have, over the last three years, they've been doing their work, doing their due diligence. They've been doing the site assessments. They've had their engineers on site. They are currently presenting their project to the siting council for approval to build that particular project. This is, albeit a battery storage unit versus a uh, solar array, is the exact same type of agreement that we're looking for. Um, you know, um, you know, every, talking about the landfill, the landfill property is ninety two point four acres. Of that ninety two point four acres, twenty two plus acres is the municipal cap. Five, uh, three acres is the recr site. So that leaves about sixty acres of that site basically undeveloped. Um, so we're just looking at another opportunity to develop a piece of the site. Believe it's five acres, um, which still lays potentially on six fifty five acres plus if we were to develop it. Where the piece, where the landfill is, the recr site. We're never going to get rid of that property. It's never going to go away. The city of Torrington is always going to own it just because it has a hazardous waste site on it. Costs on average eighty thousand dollars a year to manage the landfill. As you're aware, many are aware, it closed in the early nineties, the last loads were brought up there in eighty six. And that site is basically, other than us pouring almost two million dollars into it in maintenance and site testing. That site has basically laid dormant. Um, now we have these great opportunities to, one, get revenue from the site. To offset our costs and, you know, long term sustainable revenue for the city on a site that. You know, we can't get rid of, we'll never get rid of it. And um, it really is, uh, you know, a good project, like, like the council approved the prior solar array. This, they, they augment each other perfectly. I understand your lack, your concern about that forty year commitment. We, we made the same, the council approved and authorized the merit X to negotiate the agreement with US Solar. For a very similar length of period of time.
In my mind, solar is more passive technology and, and this to me somehow seems um, uh, a somewhat different animal here. And I also don't like that. I don't have, again, as a city councilman, I don't have anything that looks like even the broad outlines of a contract that spells out what this, you know, lease option is, you know? It's, it's just a lot of verbiage right now that's going on and, and we're tying the city for forty years to a lot of verbiage that's going on. I would love to see something that even a one sheet that just said exactly what you said, what the benchmarks were at six years, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Also that indicated what tax abatements.
Mayor, I'd like to call the motion as is, please.
All right, I have a request from the uh, council to call this motion. So I'm going to call it. I have a motion, uh, to, no, not for a call. I don't need a second for a call of the motion.
Yeah, you do. You can't just call them. One person can't just stop the discussion.
Well, do you need a second? I'm seconding it.
All right, motion and second to call the motion. That means I have to take a vote on that. Because I don't. Call, right. Doesn't need a, it doesn't need a motion or a, a second. It's just a call.
No, it doesn't. It doesn't. I've just called the motion, mayor, as is. Uh, it's been moved and seconded, um, and I'm, I'm ready to vote as a councilwoman.
All right, um, I don't know what to do with this one. We'll go. All right, uh, I have a request to call, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposing the, the motion.
No, there's a call. This is the motion. The motion on the floor was a recommendation uh, to authorize a mayor to um, act on behalf of the city to um, execute or negotiate and execute the lease.
There must be a vote on the call to end the discussion. A single person cannot end the discussion. A single person cannot end a discussion. No, they can't.
It was seconded. Of course, it's always moved. There is opportunity for calling the motion at any point. So the motion has been called and seconded.
Their discussion. A majority of the sitting board gets to determine if they want to end the discussion. Not one city councilman. Nobody gets, has that power. Are you kidding me?
So the motion was moved um, to end this discussion and I second that.
There needs to be a vote to end a discussion. If other people have questions, they may want to ask.
I know, forgive me, I keep looking at my, my Roberts Rules, um, expert, um, and uh. Call the question. It ends the discussion.
We've been on the board of that, we know. So where are we right now, just for point of order?
So point of order, uh, motion, there, there was a call, yeah, exactly. So there was a call to, um, a call, called the question. The motion was to authorize a merit and act on behalf of the city to negotiate and execute a lease. Uh, the vote was um, five in, in favor and one opposed.
So next, we move on.
Next up, yes, the end of that.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time and your presentation and your work.
Thank you.
We'll be there. Thank you.
All right, I'm moving into item twelve. I'll entertain a motion to accept the building department report for the month of September twenty, uh, excuse me, September twenty twenty three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Walden. Hold a second. I thank you, thank you, Councilman Manichia. All in fa- excuse me, uh, any questions or comments on the, um, report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize a tax refunds indicated on the list dated October sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hona. God bless you. Uh, questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Walden.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. Questions or comments, or excuse me, um, all in favor?
Aye.
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 None opposed. So out to the department heads. Thank you, Chief Borden and Deputy Chief Tripp. Um, anything to add this evening from the fire department? Treasure, city treasurer, Dan Farley, anything? Mr. Drew, anything to add? The city clerk's office, anything to add? Nothing? Okay. Uh, I see Mr. Towsey is on the line and I always hate to do this because I'm never sure if they can unmute themselves, but I don't know. Is there anything from WPCA?
Nothing for me, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move into item fifteen and I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Walden.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, all right, we'll go from my left. Anything this evening, Mr. Oliver?
No, thank you, mayor.
Mr. Kevin Arrow?
Yes, I'd like to go on record. I, I personally think, to the best of my recollection, that vote to approve the Waldron agenda item, Walden agenda item was illegal. I think the way that the process was handled was not correctly done. And uh, the discussion was prematurely silenced and uh. I'd just like that noted in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay. The, uh, oh, Councilman Manichia, anything this evening?
Nothing, mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman Hona?
Um, I have a couple of things. I'm over here Googling it too because I'm scanning and it does sort of look like two thirds or, I don't know. Trying to think of the times.
The motion does require a second, is not debatable and requires two thirds majority. Limited extent, extent, limit or extend debate may be desired if the group has an adopted rule limiting the amount of time.
Correct. It requires two thirds vote.
So there was two, well.
You had the majority unfor- fortunately or unfortunately, depending upon where you were, because it was a five to one. If I understood the vote correctly, so the two thirds majority is then covered, correct?
Well, I wasn't sure if you needed two thirds vote to close discussion or you needed two thirds vote on the motion.
A single person cannot shut down a parliamentary debate by equally elected officers. That's just common sense and it goes to the very beginning of this republic, period. It's nonsensical to think otherwise.
Okay, so Carol, do you have a?
Jesus.
We haven't closed the meeting. We can, we can correct this.
Yes, you can correct that now, but the people who were here that I would have, that other people had questions for have now left the building. So quite frankly, the discussion has been aborted prematurely. Oh, they're here. Okay, good.
No, there was, there was a motion to mayor, may I? There was a motion to call the motion.
All right, hold on, we're, we're, we're still in, um, we're still in an agenda, agenda item, business by mayor and members. So the question on the table is, you know, did we prematurely uh, move item number eleven? When we should have closed the motion on the call.
On the discussion.
Two thirds of a vote would be required to close the debate.
Correct.
And then the motion is made. Okay. We do, I would think, yes.
We need to vote to, sorry.
That vote is no good. The vote that you took was no good.
Right.
To approve the agenda item.
So we have to rescind that vote and vote again to call the question, correct, and end debate? Then you get you two, you two thirds and then we vote, assuming you get two thirds, like you, right?
Right.
And then we vote on the motion.
Right.
Just making sure.
I'm, I'm looking at what Cornell.edu is telling me right now. That's where.
Yeah, I'm on board effect.
I'm on parliamentary procedures.
It sounds like it's vote to close discussion is seconded, but the vote to pass the motion would be two thirds at that point if we voted to close discussion and didn't have all of our discussion. So I mean, if we let all of our discussion go on, then we might be able to go to a simple majority versus, right?
Very simple. In order to shut down other people from asking questions, you need two thirds. That makes sense, doesn't it? In order to approve an agenda item, you need a simple majority. That makes sense. It's actually really simple.
Okay, so let's call the, let's call that motion again, if you rescinded the other one.
So to rescind the.
You made the motion.
Yeah.
Armon made the motion.
Yes.
But does it require something a little, yeah, I, does it, does it require a motion to rescind the vote? Because it wasn't just a simple motion and second, there was a vote. So I think we need a motion to rescind the action taken under item eleven. Seconded, vote taken, and then we can move to do it correctly. Does that? Okay.
I'll move.
So I have a motion to rescind uh, the um, vote taken on item number eleven, um, made by Councilman Oliver with a second by Councilman Manichia. All in favor of rescinding that motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So to wrap up, uh, number eleven. Is there a motion? I think we put this motion back on the floor and pick up where we left off. Versus trying to correct the call of the motion.
Yeah, at the time that that call was made by Councilman Manisha, I thought I saw at least two council people indicating they had further questions.
Still questions. Okay, all right.
We'll stand down and not, everybody knows my feelings on the subject. And if there's other questions, I will default them to those council people.
All right, so I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the facilities manager, public works director to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city to negotiate and execute lease agreement with Walden Renewables for battery storage and a small portion of the city landfill. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Manichia. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilman Oliver. All right, well, floor is um, open again and questions or comments?
I had a question about decommissioning.
Yes.
What's to happen and I don't know who can answer it, but um, we go through all of this, you guys get it approved, you get a plan, you start. And then, I don't know, you run out of money or you decide that you aren't really into renewable energy or something and you walk away. Is there, I saw that you had to put a plan in place for decommissioning at the beginning of the project. So I'm assuming we are not on the hook as a city for dealing with these batteries that are then sitting there on our property?
Correct. So if the, if within the lease agreement, it is a requirement that we are responsible for decommissioning a facility if it stops operating for a specific period of time. Beyond that, we bond these projects prior to putting a shovel in the ground. So the city has access to the funds necessary to throw that switch if something goes sideways with our company, with the grid, with the facility, whatever it is. That bond keeps the city uh, from being on the hook for anything.
So Jamie, that's a question also for you. Do you feel comfortable with that? Uh, we're not going to be on the hook for like.
Because it's, it's written in there at any point. If it's no, 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 or whatever, the bond is in there to cover our costs to get rid of all of it. And they're theoretically on the hook for it, not the city financially.
Thank you.
At the point of belaboring the point, I guess I am a little bit, but these projects, once operational, are a grid asset. And so the likelihood that it will just sort of rust away and go um, upside down is, is almost non-existent.
Eversource is pushing for this because this is the new wave of the future to help reduce demand instead of turning on oil plants to fill that. You know, peak events that happen, now they'll pull from batteries to not have to do that. So Eversource is pushing, this happens to be a phenomenal site per Eversource. I have talked to Eversource about it. This location of having a major grid access happens to fall within Torrington.
And that's actually a great point. There are some discussions happening right now with the incoming, sort of the utility companies in Connecticut to create a rule that if a project is to be sold once operational, Eversource wants first crack at acquisition of that asset because it is an asset on their system.
Thank you. That's all I have. Question, Councilman Oliver?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, just because I don't have the proposal in front of me and I don't remember seeing it, what is the uh, remuneration to the city for the exercising of the lease option for the six years? How is the city compensated a second before that lease?
We're paying five, five thousand dollars a year to have the option to develop the project. So during that thirty years, I'm sorry, the six years, it's thirty thousand dollar payment. If at the end of six years we're unsuccessful, you know, we walk away from the property and the city keeps that money.
If you said that last time during your last presentation, I'm sorry, I don't, I just didn't recall.
I said a lot, no problem.
Uh, and then the last thing too, um, is when is the monetary lease value set? Is it set now for six years from now or is it set six years from now? Because obviously with inflation, um, what is it? Thirty a year?
Forty, I thought.
Thirty a year?
Uh, yes, yeah. Yes.
We are agreeing that whether the project goes forward or not right now, that we are assuming that it does, that we're locking in a thirty thousand dollar a year lease payment to the city and that's when the forty year lease starts.
No, that's not.
It's progressive. It increases.
Yeah, there's an escalator.
Here's an escalator.
Two percent.
Two percent every year.
That's not what I'm asking. The emphasis is on the wrong syllable there. So why would the city want to lock in a guaranteed thirty two thousand dollars a year or thirty thousand dollars a year now? When thirty thousand dollars, five, six years from now, or if the project gets delayed even further, let's say we're ten, twelve years out before the lease starts?
We are capped at six years. If we do not have an operational facility at that time and move into the operations period payments, we have no option to build the facility.
Fair enough, but right now, we're locking in that first year, six years ahead of.
Well, I would say you're not actually locking in any dollar amount. We're going to, it sounds like deal with the mayor's office on what the specific financial terms of this agreement would look like. We have a proposal. Yeah, we have a proposal in front of the city. Yeah, so it's, it's five, five thousand dollars a year for the six year development term while we permit, invest in interconnection facility. If we are, are, let's say year five, we get all of our municipal permits, all the approvals needed, and we build the facility, then we move into the operations period where we start paying that operations period rent. What we proposed is to start at six thousand dollars per acre per year. Uh, with a minimum guaranteed payment of thirty thousand dollars if we use three acres.
Okay.
And then that escalates at that point of operation by two percent every year for the operational life of the project.
Okay, I understand.
There's also additional tax revenue on top of that as they put stuff on.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
That's a woman, Hona. That was, yes, one point. Um, but I, that actually reminded me because I think when I compared this to your first presentation a while back to us, this first year numbers, maybe six thousand dollars higher than it was. I want to say it was originally going to be thirty thousand. And I could compare the numbers on, like the last presentation when I was looking at them, it looked like you had increased the amount you were paying in rent in year one of operations. I didn't know if Jamie was a good negotiator or why those numbers changed.
They did go up in the discussions we had. That was part of it. That was part of it, but it also may have been, um, you know, we looked at six, six acres with that six thousand dollar per acre payment, but we were also talking about a minimum payment of thirty thousand, no matter how much land we use. So there may have been some crossover there.
Okay, I was curious about the difference in those numbers.
Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
And if, well, I can just get on the record as well for the council's, um, information before calling the vote. What is the projected total cost of this project? Should you get through the six-year option period, get all of the approvals and permits and actually bring in these, um, these, uh, batteries, what are we looking at?
Capital, capital cost of, you know, a hundred million dollars is not outside of the realm of possibility.
Taxed at our rate for personal property.
Correct.
Thank you.
So you're saying thirty-six thousand isn't the most we're going to get?
It is not, not even, this isn't even.
Component of the overall.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, the revenue is going to far exceed thirty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
More like four point seven million. Well, give or take. Uh, I, without, without doing the seventy percent, uh, assessment, uh, reduction, thirty percent assessment reduction, you're talking about four million dollars of tax revenue.
Yeah.
Annually.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions or comments for the record? All right. Now I will call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
All right, I'm sorry, we were still in, um, business by mayor and members.
I think you left off with me and.
I did, yeah.
Um, my other question, um, is just about the audit. I know, I think I saw on the agenda tomorrow night for, uh, the board of finance that you're going to be like discussing, maybe putting some new policies in place. Does it relate, is there going to, because I did my best to read through the auditor's reports. I mean, everybody who knows me knows that I'm sort of a big picture girl, so, um, those are not always my favorite things, but, um, is there any kind of presentation that could be made to us or to the board of finance to further explain their findings? I know I've sat through lots of those and other boards and.
Absolutely, yeah. So we're working with CLA to coordinate a joint meeting so CLA can present the audit findings. Uh, for anybody that's read through the audit, the numbers are there. Financially and fiscally, we're very sound. Uh, however, you know, factor in, uh, large turnover, a loss of institutional knowledge, vacancies. Um, there are processes that definitely need to be shored up. Um, so we are looking to, uh, put together those policies and procedures manuals that'll help, um, that will help address those concerns, um, and those policy and procedures would also include some of the responsibilities or opportunities, I should say, to work with the board of education to make sure that, um, those uh, areas where there were findings on their side would also be picked up.
That would be both the findings on the city side and the findings on the board of that side.
We are one organization and we keep referring to the board side, the city side. It's one organization. And all of the responsibility ends up shouldered by the board of finance. So yeah, those policies would be inclusive.
So I just wanted to, I mean, I don't know if it's really a question for the city council or not, but I just wanted to kind of have a clear understanding that anybody who's making any changes to the policies would actually not vote on any changes to them until such a presentation is made by the, by CLA.
Correct. And if you read the M D N A that the city had to, um, prepare as part of that audit, you would see where we identified there could be a policy adopted. Those policies would be, um, voted on and adopted by the board of finance. Absolutely. Nothing done before the presentation.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Walden?
Yeah, just one thing, um, this, this is our last meeting before the election, I believe. So the next meeting would be after the election?
Yes.
Okay, well, good luck to everybody on, uh, the election. It's coming up fast.
It is. All right, uh, Councilwoman Ruette, I didn't get a chance to ask anything this evening.
Um, nothing, mayor, thank you very much. And my, um, my heart goes out to the Michelle family and, um, and we will miss Vic. You know, I, we, we already miss him even at this meeting. But, um, I truly, you know, is just that institutional knowledge. And, uh, the, just the love he had for the city of Torrington is just, uh, will be sorely filled with this, but that's on there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, uh, I am going to move into item sixteen. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public or comment on the agenda items only, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Walden.
Second.
And second by Councilman Manichia. All right, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're open to the public for agenda items. Anyone from the public wishing to address? Seeing and hearing none, there being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Councilman Oliver.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.